I touched on it with Danya yesterday.
That's good. Right there, look. Are we on?
No.
Not yet.
I know that's just the copy of something he said.
Have I do something?
Tuesday, January 7th, I'm sorry, you should have checked, Mr. Parker, are we ready to go? Tuesday, January 7th, 2:25, 6:31 PM, we're gonna call this meeting from order. Everyone, please stand with us at the end of the class here with my right hand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, the first item on our agenda is introduction of new hires. And that is you. Are you Ms. Catherine Severdil Downey?
I am.
Hi, Ms. Downey, nice to meet you.
Hi.
And your new hire, your district-wide special education teacher, behavioral specialist. Thank you very much, we need you. Do you want to talk anything about yourself?
Um, I've been doing this for thirty-six years, um, in different facets, especially, um, I am really, I'm passionate for it, and I'm hoping to share my knowledge of all thirty-six years. I've been doing this with all of you, and I'm a passion, and I hope I can do whatever I can for the children and teachers here.
Wonderful, so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
I'm Tracy Mares, I'm a parent, also board event president this year.
I'm Chris Allen, president, uh, vice president. But I'm curious, um, I know you said you're, you're just a drive, where, which building are you interested right now?
I'll be in all of them.
Let me move it around.
Julie Lamont, board member?
David Warner, board member.
Erin Davis, Central Center.
My name is Rebecca Centralisle, I'm a trustee, I'm also speech and languageologist, I'm a special ed.
And we have another board member online, Ms. Danya Mans.
Hi.
Hi.
And so thank you so much for coming and joining the district and for all the help they give to the children and stuff.
Thank you for having me.
So thank you for coming out too. Okay, next on our agenda is policy review, and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to my vice president, trustee Allen, for the policy review.
So I don't know what the policy is, I'm just gonna read what's here, okay, so we're reviewing these policies. Uh, one is the use of assistance in animals, policy thirty-two twenty, my apologies, because time that looked at it, they weren't even done, thank you, next meeting. Um, and policy fifty-six eighty-one, school safety plans. Um, everyone, both these did have some recommended changes, these have been reviewed by legal and our admin. Uh, so now it's time for the board to comment, once we've reviewed this, these will be presented to the public at the regular meeting later this month. Will be left open until the regular meeting in February, at which time they will be put up for, um, an approval resolution. So, do any board members have comments on either of these policies? I've seen, did we want?
Fifty, I don't have any comments on thirty-two twenty, but fifty-six eighty-one. Uh, the first paragraph, they changed it to say, uh, declared state disaster emergencies involving a communicable disease or local public heat emergency. Should be health emergency. And then, uh, and then, they've got, at the, at the bottom of the, of the first page and the top of the second, uh, it says, "The district-wide safety team will consider as part of the review of comprehensive district-wide safety plan, the installation of a panic alarm system." Now, we have a, a separate safety committee that, you know, reviews a whole set of recommendations, and that's probably one of them. I'm not sure if this should be for the safety team, or if it should be located elsewhere in the policy, or if there should be a, a bigger envelope of a paragraph that says, "You shall consider all these things," and amongst the, you know, hundred thing, items in the, in the list, uh, is the, is the panic button.
It just says consideration, it does not mandate that that happened in that place, or that it's actually used. Are you, do you have a specific suggestion, trustee Warner, as far as where that would get discussed?
Um, probably, you would have to move it down into some subsection, but there isn't a subsection, the, the subsections on what the, what's in the, the district-wide safety plan.
So, okay, so this, okay, so this policy, sorry, I'm thinking out loud with you, this policy fifty-six eighty-one does deal with the annual district-wide school safety?
Plan, right, not the, not the
Safety Committee.
But not the safety committee, so here's the
So there's, let's just be clear, we have a board safety committee that discusses multiple issues, and then we have, according to this thing here, the district-wide school safety team, which was board approved at the Reorg meeting, and is the, uh, meeting that Ms. Raymond chairs, another title, um, and organizes to me yearly to go for that plan, including various members of the public. So, are you recommending that that consideration goes to the board committee before it goes to this?
Yeah, that recommendation, it, I think it's actually on the, on the list.
So, just to play devil's advocate, this sentence, this phrase, does not prohibit that committee from discussing it, just like it doesn't prohibit tech committee from discussing the technological aspects of it.
Nope, but you could put in, you could put in a hundred different recommendations from the, from the, uh, that, from the firm that we got to, to look things up, and you put some generic statement in there surrounding that.
Right, but I'm just gonna, again, play devil's advocate, the whole policy has to do with that district-wide, I mean, that section has to do with the district-wide school safety plan.
Yes.
And there are multiple aspects to that plan, it's not like we're all, we're gonna repeat everything that's discussed as part of that plan and say, in a different section. That should also be discussed from the safety committee, the safety committees may come and go, depending on the board, it's like that.
So, do you wanna put in security cameras and fences and guardrails and, yeah.
So, what's the point of action, though, for tonight's? Would you like to make a suggestion for changing it?
I would delete it, because it's an item on a list.
Okay, when is our next, um, community policy?
End of this month.
So that's bef, uh, is it before, after?
It's after that presentation, it's probably before, it's up for a vote.
Okay, so let's look at this, then, a little more in detail, and have a, like, a fleshed-out discussion. If you want to send any rationale, if you wanna talk to myself, or trustee Allen, trustee Allen?
Figure out another policy that goes in, yeah.
Or if, or if it stays in this, and it, it's able to address the issue that you have with being duplicate, or, or there's another policy, whatever, we can work out, but we don't need to take too much time tonight going back and forth about it. What were you gonna say, trustee Allen?
Uh, your point is that it's either too specific or not inclusive enough.
Yep, not, that, it's a bad suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and then, uh, under item, okay, seven on the le, on the, next to the left page, ensure contact to required evacuation lockdown drills in a trauma-informed developmentally and age-appropriate manner that does not include props, actors, simulations, or other tactics intended to mimic a school shooting or other act of violence or emergency in all district buildings required as required by law. So, um, the, the new stuff is, don't scare the kids to death with your drills. And so, I think, uh, what about the smokehouse? Does this preclude, uh, use of the smokehouse, which is, you know, the, for the, they have a, a children's thing where they, they, the kids crawl through it, it's kind of, uh, to teach fire safety.
Fire safety, yeah.
Right, and they're young kids.
It's not part of
And it doesn't scare them, so.
Yeah, and it's not part of the school, no, it's a separate entity that comes onto school grounds.
That's correct, so.
Well, I disagree with the whole thing, but, um, I don't think it scares kids at all, but whatever, that's not the distinction, is that?
I think that's what we're saying, that, like, that might be considered an age-appropriate manner to, um, you know.
So you think this is
You're saying includes props and simulations.
Right.
This is also in all district buildings, it's not technically a building.
But if I make this suggestion, in everything that's red and new, we could strike the, or emergency portion, and that would be able to include fire drills, et cetera. The others, two references, two may make a school shooting or other act of violence.
Yes. This, yeah.
I'm uncomfortable with leaving there, I don't know what we're gonna do.
The stuff that's going on, kids need to be prepared.
There's a whole lot of evidence against
There's evidence against, upside too, the front, evidence both sides.
There's a lot, a lot of evidence of pre-traumatizing kids to prepare them for more trauma, which is not indicative of good practice.
Or is trauma, I mean, listen, you could go back and forth, there's lots of evidence on this side, there's lots of evid, evidence on that side.
But if you're going by trauma-informed research, you would not simulate a school shooting. It is not trauma-informed, it's, um, or developmentally appropriate.
But children that are prepared for school shootings live, I think that's more important.
Like, so we could, we could
Go back and forth.
Go forever on this, but the, there's no evidence of that either, so I, I, I don't, I think that this is, I would be comfortable with taking emergency out, um.
I would like to check with legal, I feel like I've read something about, uh, there being a law around this, or some sort of
I don't know, is there, is there a commissioner's regulation or something?
She's gonna be here soon, can you?
So maybe ahead of the call, we can ask on number seven, what's the legal requirement for co-addition?
We can double-check with, um, Carol.
And at the minimum, do we all agree with striking or emergency?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So if there is no legal, then we'll have to debate this again at the next meeting.
Uh-huh, sure. Sure. Um, okay, anything else on either policy? If not, we're gonna move to the speaker executive of board, that would be Mr. Tracy, just walked in.
It has been good, um, that point up, um, this, um, the student population, to say happy new years. There have been a few games, um, since the year started, I know the, the boyhood basketball team won against Pete's Hill last Friday, and there, you did a crumb-jabbing game, and all, I was at the 30th today. Um, there was also a fencing meet on Saturday that was successful, bad sales, bad sales. Lots of tickets for it. Bowling, I believe, has a meet today at, um, Bowlerland, and there will be a wrestling, a wrestling meet tomorrow as well. Um, aside from the athletics, the Key Club is currently running the thirsty-for-dirty fundraiser, where it's having, um, Key Club members donate, um, various amounts, like, from, uh, from the U.S., so they're having, um, Key Club members donate. Right, other than that, I think, I don't think there's much.
Okay, you did that off of your memory, that's good, okay, wonderful. Um, and, uh, does anyone have any questions at all?
Can we, can we add Aaron Woodbury?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Aaron Woodbury, he, um, he's been nominated for Lohe Player of the Week, I think this is our fourth, our fourth nomination, um, but that's gonna be due on Wednesday, so if anyone can vote, that would be helpful. Also, the Global Travel Club is, is preparing for their Costa Rica animal trip next month, from, and during winter break, so that's fun.
Wonderful, trustee Allen?
Do you feel a huge sense of relief? I'm assuming you're ninety-nine percent done applying for colleges, if not one hundred percent done?
No question.
Just applying, I'm not asking where or anything, but yay, first hurdle overcome.
Yay.
So, trustee Allen and I attended a training yesterday where they were talking about doing surveys for seniors and recent grads, and I, I'm wondering if, and if you don't have an answer now, you can take it back to the group and let us know later, but is that something you think people would fill out if we asked all seniors to fill out some questions about their experience in Greenberg? Maybe how long they've attended the district, um, what's their, you know, at the end, 'cause you're at the end now, what's your experience? Um, then like, what could make it better? Um, and if you feel prepared, if you feel like you were helped to get ready for college, or for the trades, um, or for work, do you think something like that would be, you guys would be open to it, I know you're tired from your applications and scholarships and applications. Some sort of a survey?
No.
Okay, um, and so, the, the, sorry, the training we were in, or the group we were in, talked about, um, the particular school district that did that, talked about looking at that feedback as data as well, for the board to know, you know, if they've been approving the right sort of things, or for the actual customers that we have, so, okay, sounds good, thank you.
I have one more question. And just curious, uh, have you heard anything about, speaking of former students, about graduates, recent graduates coming back during this time while they're on college break?
Oh, yeah, I've, I've had, um, I've seen one of the seniors from last year, um, like, took, like, visit during my classes, I think that was last week.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, I've seen a few.
Okay, so it's like a sporadic visiting, there's nothing like an organized panel coming in, or, hey, stop by guidance today, we've got some grads, go in, or go to the theater?
No.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you.
It's just a personal, like, different
Visiting different teachers, yeah, okay.
All right, any questions, comments, no? All right, we're gonna move on to the board president's report, I charged my thing a little bit. Um, first, I am gonna also say happy new year, welcome back to the school year. The board has a pretty busy schedule this January, lots of special meetings, so I do wanna thank all the trustees for reading all the material, ranking material, giving feedback, answering all my emails, and for making yourselves available, 'cause there's a lot of meetings, um, and we are all exhausted. Um, I did send a bunch of questions, um, many that came from trustees, um, to admin, um, they're public questions, so I do have to ask, ask them here. Um, there's inquiries into our MBK program, Dr. I am not sure if you want me to ask you, or Dr. Joku. Um, so, just district-wide, which I know trustees have asked, because we have an MBK program, and nothing was actually, um, started that we know of, um, so I don't know if there is some information that can be shared. Um, there's been comments that there's no money, that we're waiting for some sort of, um, uh, monies or documents from August and grants from October. Um, I'm not sure what exactly is happening, but we're just wondering, we also have a Good for Girls, um, contract for MSK today that we're signing, so, you know, that should be, um, done, 'cause it is a little bit different than MBK, but can someone give us an update, what's happening with that?
So, Dr. Joku will start, and I'll chime in.
Another problem, so, so that we're aware, there are two grants, there's MBK Fellows and MBK Face, family and community engagement.
Mm-hmm.
So, MBK, first of all, kudos to all those who worked on MBK Fellows, because that was submitted and approved before I came on.
Okay.
So, just so that that's clear, that was submitted, approved, um, what happened is that shortly after, they, they communicated back to us, I believe there were like two items that needed adjustments for details in order for them to release. So that was communicated, I think, I think that was submitted by Mr. Gaines, and once again, thank you, Mr. Gaines and Ms. Johnson, for submitting that, uh, between Friday and today. So, with MBK Fellows, that has begun. So our young men started prior, because they have a master series that they meet every Thursday, the mentor, so even prior to, because they start way before typically we receive the funding, so that started. Um, our MBK Fellows also have participated in the toy drive that just recently happened, so they are, they are participating in events. So that has started. With MBK Face, slightly different. MBK Face is something that, um, required time, because as you know, we, we had a transition, we had to review, um, the performance and the program from prior year, from the summer. Um, we had to make sure that we had a director in place that knew the program and was aware of the process, but we also wanted to make sure that we had a timeline of events. As, as of right now, the timeline of events has not been approved. So, from my department, I would say that I would not, I will not move forward with a program without communicating that we have everything in place that is in alignment with the amount of money that we allotted for, because if we go over the money, we get, we have frustrated mentors, and people not getting paid, or going into the coffers of general fund, which, um, Ms. Raymond would not be happy with me. So then, um, what we did in the interim, as we await for, because that was, that was submitted as well, um, we communicated to, uh, our representative regarding MBK Face about, in December, when would we expect to receive, when would the funding be released? They said it's in grant finances and process, they couldn't give us a time. So we anticipated January, which is what we spoke about, but they will not give you, they, when they process is when they process. So in the meantime, what we did, and we communicated with the board, is we did hire the, the director, I believe in November, returned in November. During the months of November and December, we allocated, thank you to Ms. Raymond, we allocated some general funds to offer at about ten hours per mentor to begin to start, because we wanted to start, um, and also give them time to build the timeline as well. So there were some things that were started, but again, the timeline is in draft form, there needs to be time to review it, that time, I, I don't, I haven't had that time yet to review it in detail. We have been able to get part of it done, which is why the Good for Girls is on the docket, and if you see the list of activities with Good for Girls, you see how thorough we were in terms of what we wanted to have done with, um, Good for Girls. And Good for Girls is under MBK, so it's not titled, it's under MBK Face, it's not titled My Sister's Keeper, it's just, it's Good for Girls, under MBK.
Are they, they're only gonna work with girls, though?
They're working with girls, but there's all the parts of Face, um, Face Grant that are working with other students.
And
And that's the part that needs to be
And that's the eleven thousand of, eleven thousand dollars?
Huh? Yes, that's the eleven thousand.
Uh, and who did that timeline?
Who did, we worked together, so that was between, you mean the timeline for Good for Girls?
Yeah.
That was worked on with Mr. Gaines, myself, Ms. Johnson, we met with Lori, even, and we spoke about this, I believe, during a session in November-ish, to say that we were in conversation with them.
Okay, so, 'cause Good for Girls is a, um, it's an organized, oh, very
Right, but we adjusted it to our needs.
To your needs.
So we created a whole new program.
So I feel like that's more, um, what's the word, pre-cut, pre-cooky cut?
Not fully, no.
Not fully, because you had to adjust it, but it's, a lot of the stuff is started.
Yeah.
So what, what's happening with the boys?
With all the, the remaining children, boys and girls, that is the timeline. So there are ideas that have been generated by the mentors, et cetera, but when you look at the hours, we have to, again, make sure that the hours allocated, the trips as well, all are, fall within budget. So at present, they don't. So we have to make sure they do. And then if there's any adjustments that needs to be made, um, regarding the other items on the Face, um, grant, then we have to make those adjustments and communicate it to the state.
Okay, any other questions?
So I can say it's partially started, but not fully, but also know that we are still awaiting for them to release the funds.
So the ten dol, ten hours per mentor was used up already?
The ten hours, it depends on the mentor, what they submit, so if the ten hours were given, that's all they, they were allotted.
They've done things.
They've done things, they said that they've done some after-school work with the students, they've also done some, I think, some intro meetings, et cetera, some things, but that's what I was told has been done, but them also, that was also supposed to be, also supposed to be used to build the timeline as well, because that's their time.
Okay. Can you hear us, trustee Mares? Oh, okay.
I can hear, I just have some questions, so.
Yes.
So, excuse me, I'm on the janitor's light, so you've got third question for a grant, so it's being on the money, and you're working off of that, or?
We're working, yeah. There's a, there's a set amount, there's an amount that we, that we are allotted for both Fellows and Face, for both programs, we're allotted a certain amount. So that amount has been allocated, so it's, it's pretty certain we will obtain it. They just have to make sure that the, 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 the components of the grant are approved by, um, by New York State Ed. So that's, we have that for, we had that for Fellows, then they came back and said they wanted some additional information. For Face, we're still waiting for them to release, but we have been in communication, meaning that we are always in communication, sharing, like, questions back and forth before the final submission.
Okay, and then the monies that were used from the general fund, um, are you gonna transfer them back once you get the grant?
Exactly, that's the, that's the goal, is to re-apply them so that it's coming out from that particular line, yes.
Okay, and then, um, you had mentioned that there were some activities for MBK that happened in November, do you know what they were, I'm just, just curious?
Well, I would have to go back to the timeline, not in necessarily November, they were allotted to start in Nov, they were allotted monies in November and December.
Okay.
So I would have to check the timeline, I don't go detail to detail, but I would have to check the timeline to see what was done. I do understand if, if I'm looking, if I'm remembering the grid that I shared with them, it's some after-school, um, support, after-school help, um, that was done with Face. With Fellows, it was the, um, evening Thursday masterclass series, they've gone, I think they're on their third book, and they've done some, um, some trips, a toy drive and something else, I can't, I would have to look it up.
Okay, yeah, the reason I ask is 'cause I know there was an interest form that went out in November to sign up for January, but if there were things going on in November, I'm just kinda curious why it may not have been open to all students, or if it was, was there any communications? Um, as you know, after-school help has been a big topic, so if there was some that was available, even before this academy started, it would have been, it's a kinda know that for other parents.
Right, so I think that the interests are, I, right now, what I know of for sh, for certain is that there was some work being done with some students, and then, to the degree, it's not approved until I see the final timeline. We wanted to make sure we got started. The goal is to ensure that all the, you know, appropriate students are attending, um, MBK Face and MBK Fellows, but I need to make sure that things are in order before, um, I say go forth with all of it. 'Cause there are, there are more ideas, so that you know, there are more ideas, there's, there's other things, but it has to be within budget.
Okay, yeah, just to make sure everyone's included, not just a selected bunch.
Oh, no, yes, well, that's important, so that's something that I can circle back to, you know, how they, how the students are identified, um, yes.
Okay, thanks.
But if you can, if you can send me that interest survey, 'cause I, I have an idea of what it was for, but if you, if you know what it is, if you could send that to me, that would be helpful, so that you can clarify what I'm thinking it is.
All right, okay.
Trustee Allen? So just a couple of things, I remember a year or so ago, you talked about the, aligning the, the ideas and the hours, and the budget, blah, 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 and I remember, last time we did this, you know, there was a plan, and then they had to approve it, and then I think we had to approve it? Or do we, or do we only approve the, the individual programs as they come up, like Good for Girls, or whatever?
Individual programs as they come up.
Gotcha, okay, so we would see the overall master plan unless it's in our packet one week?
But we, but we, we did agree that before moving forward, as per Dr. Iverson, that for this particular program, MBK Face, that the timeline would be created, and that we would be able to communicate with you that it is approved before we fully start.
Yep.
So that's something that we wanna make sure, and then this is creating a system. So if a system wasn't necessarily, we wanna make sure that there's something in place that we can use from here on in.
Right.
And I think that that's, I'm sorry, I'm going on, but that's also being communicated to the mentors, because there are different ways the program was done, it's very important that people understand we have to work with a budget. I know we all have great ideas.
And I'm hop, I mean, you've probably heard me say in other venues, and tagging on to what trustee Mans is saying, is, you know, I'm hoping that we're able to, to reach as many kids as possible who are interested in these programs, and that, that's part of the delay, hopefully, you're looking at the biggest bang for our buck to get the most outreach.
Well, I'm working with, I'm working with the director, right, and I'm, and the director is also working with the, um, guidance counselors and such, within, and the social workers within the building.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna do the best we can this year, and then I believe you just improve every year. It's not gonna be perfect It's not gonna be perfect the first year.
Yep. Just two, two more little short questions. And you mentioned the, the after-school. I think that, just wanna clarify, there is after-school academic health that's different from it.
And that's what we also have to make sure of, that there is, what is the difference, and who are, because you don't wanna also have an idea.
Right, absolutely. Okay, good. So that we're not...
We're gonna try, yeah.
Okay. And then, last thing, just clarifying. We keep saying FACE, and I don't remember if you said at the beginning, so I'm just gonna repeat it if you did, that FACE stands for Family and Community Engagement, which is why it's not boys or girls.
And then how many fellows do we have?
Two, two fellows, but then we have individuals that were preparing their minds, but they're not part of, they're not listed.
Yeah. Trustee Jacobson?
For full transparency, I just wanna declare that I volunteer with Good for Girls. And I'm actually running one of the Saturday sessions. And I forget what my topic is, but I'll be running one. And there is, they also host, which is not part of this contract, a career expo for girls. And I will also have a booth at that, and that is March fifteenth, and that's open to everyone.
Are you getting paid for it?
No.
Okay.
It is all volunteer. I promote the field of art therapy and participate in that capacity. But I will say for, I participated in the career fair last year, and it was very impressive to see so many women in so many different fields, across the board, across the county.
Good for Girls is a, is a well-oiled machine that started several years ago. That's why I was saying, they kinda, I agree with you. It must have been work to fit it with what we need. But I don't doubt that they weren't able to get it going.
And they've been, and I wanna say that they've been very flexible and very accommodating with our time, so we're appreciative of the partnership.
But in terms of access for all, or for all girls, the career fair, if you're not part of the Saturday program, is an option.
Okay. So let's move on. Next on the question list was approval for eighth-grade trips. Do you have something about that?
So I understand the question was that there was some confusion about the eighth-grade trip.
Yes.
That information landed on my desk today.
Oh, great.
So I don't know what the confusion, what I just received.
Well, oh, well...
And so I'm just looking at it to sign, so it can get on the agenda for the twenty-first.
Oh, great. So we'll be able to...
I will be able to look. Yes, absolutely. I'm checking to assure that it has all the pieces. I know Frank Gunn has signed the cost for the transportation. Oh, here it is. And I got it January the fifth. So, and when it came to me, there was no educational summary. It must come with the educational summary. It just came with the field trip form from Frank. So I did have to kick it back, got it today. And so I now have just received the educational summary, you know, the proposal, the why. Why, you know, that's important. That's required. The, no names of the students came. I now have that. The costs of the tickets. I haven't looked at it. I can just tell you, tell you what I have here, but I haven't read it. Here's the summary that I just received. And I now have all the names of the students. So the packet is coming complete, so I can present it to you on the, on the agenda on the twenty-first.
Sounds good. Thank you. And, uh, okay. Who's next?
Residents in Fairview have been receiving the postcards.
So they end on that, so we could go into a little more, but...
Okay, so number three, so in the packet, there, there's gotta be a hundred postcards going to High Point. The question was, are the residents in Fairview going to have the same type of postcards? Will you be meeting with the Fairview community as well? And how much did a hundred postcards cost?
I, we have those figures. So everyone in Greenberg received the postcard. The postcard was mailed to every resident, so Fairview parents, everyone, everyone in the county in, in Greenberg received the postcard. So yes, Fairview did get it. But let me just speak to us meeting at High Point. And I've never met with Stone Oaks but once, but if you, if you, you might think back to the four years, that whole piece came out of, you know, assuring that we reached that community of residents who have a large, a large number of residents who don't have a lot of students in our schools, but vote. And not making, assuring, assuring that they have the information about why they're voting, and to encourage them to vote. So we have zero in on High Point. It's, you know, the large development. And so that was a project we started that we have just continued. I go there, Ms. Raymond and I. I meet with the residents. I, I connect with the HOA lady. She sets it up. And it has proven to support, to increase the support we've gotten from them, because they have come out and supported the budget. I've seen them at the voting machine saying, "Hi, we're here." So that's just a tradition we started. We were gonna continue. So they, I contacted them, and they're very interested in meeting with Ms. Raymond and I to hear about this, the January fourth vote. Because the bottom line is, they still are taxpayers. We, we want to not only get their vote, we want them to believe in the schools and see the great things we're doing, and encourage them why it is important to support the vote, because your dollars are creating this kind of data. It's created this kind of program. So when we go in, it is a real PowerPoint where we really sell and brand the district on the realities of our district. And Ms. Raymond can probably add to it. They are very impressed with what we've done, and to, and they've supported it. So we're continuing that tradition. So I dropped off. They probably got a card, but we then drop off another hundred. Because normally the post office just would drop them by the mailboxes, and we want to assure they have it. So when we have extras, we take some there. Stone Oaks here is not as open to us being there. We've had a couple of meetings with the HOA board. They give me like fifteen minutes on the agenda. But I drop them off for the guy, George, and he gets them to the community. So it's a double whammy. It's a double attempt to get those residents who are not likely to come out and vote, because they don't have kids, to come out and vote, because their dollars are supporting what's in your backyard. So we, if you have a community, I would love to know the community in Fairview similar to that.
Oh, Fairview?
I would love, I'd certainly connect with that.
But I mean, I think the first, if you, with Fairview, the first place to stop, start, I would think, is the center, TDYCC Center, because they have a lot of senior programs for sure there, when we talk about people. You know, that don't necessarily have kids in the district that, that do vote. I know the senior population with High Point has a lot of seniors as well, and Stone Oaks. TDYCC for sure would be a good place to start, to, you know, have signs up there. I didn't see any today.
Please, the board.
Huh? What?
Civic associations.
Oh, the civic association, yes. But I just wanna say that, so civic associations. Yes, trustee Dowell?
Uh, two things. One, who, what email address should someone contact, or who should they phone if they wanted to try to set up a meeting or get more information?
They should call, uh, Ms. Kraus directly. No, this email, Ms. Kraus would be in touch with me, yes. If someone wants to have a meeting, we need to come there. They should reach out to my secretary.
So I'm gonna repeat what you've said. So if anyone wanted to ask for a meeting or more information, they should call the school district at one nine one four seven six one six thousand and push the right buttons for the superintendent's office?
Yes.
Okay. And the second thing I'd just like to point out, because I'm sure, just in case we don't get to it, on the website, which is greenbergcst.org, on the left-hand side, there's a little tab called January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five vote. Anyone watching this who is interested could click on that little tab to get all kinds of information, including a video about the vote, which is scheduled for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to nine PM, at the Williams Middle High School gym. The important part of this, it is no additional cost to taxpayers. Okay. Just in case we don't get to it.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns on the postcards? Done yet? No?
Um, since we're outreaching to specific communities, so we have anything in place to make for the, I guess, the other cultures, like our Spanish-speaking populations and things like that? Or should, you know, I don't, I don't know if we talked about that, or if that was discussed too?
I've, no, I've not met specifically with any community, but our parents, our diverse parents are, everything's translated.
The FAQ is in two languages.
It's in, the FAQ is in two languages, and so that information has been dispersed to them equally.
All right, yeah, 'cause I don't know that they wanted a meeting that based on, too, that they wanted it or requested it. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Trustee Dowell?
Help me in a second. For those que hablan español, también está disponible en el sitio web. Si empujas en el botón ali izquierda, que se pone enero catorce, veinte veinticinco, habrá más información. Especialmente si vais a la siguiente página y vas a Project FAQ, FAQ, uh, FAQ, y está transmitido a español. Y si te olvidas más preguntas, si llamas a nueve uno cuatro, siete seis uno, seis mil, y empujas los botones para el superintendente. La secretaria habla español. Gracias.
Did you wanna know the cost?
She said it. Something mill.
The phone number. Six thousand's the phone.
Oh, I did that. I heard mill, mill. Okay, sorry.
We, uh, we got the postcards through a bid, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for nine thousand postcards, which works out to be point oh eight seven two cents per postcard.
Cheaper than Christmas cards.
Very much. Okay. Any more questions, comments, concerns about the postcards? Yes?
I'm saying, I just forwarded a previous PTA council email that links up with Neighbor's Link and El Centro Espanol on Central Ave, as just the information for there, about their connection points.
All right. So next, we have emergency clothing at RJ Bailey. Do you guys know anything about that? Emergency clothing at RJ Bailey?
Do you got a response?
No, no.
Oh.
Trustee Jacobson just sent the email. I got it. But do you guys know anything about emergency clothing?
I, I thought I sent something home in the update.
You did?
Yes, I did.
I missed it.
Uh, so they, RJ Bailey, Ivy and Jackson, and I know what they did, and sent that home to, in my packet. I don't have it.
So they need clothes now for students who have accidents? So, um, is there one?
No, that, well, we, that is not money that we use in the budget to buy. How they normally get it is through donations from parents. I did talk to Ms. Rossi and the other principals' parents volunteer and bring things, things that are left at the end of the year. They wash them, they keep them. I know during my principal days, we, we just kept extra things that were left and washed. And we would, if something became sold, we were able to change a quick shirt to have the kid sustain during the day, send it home in a bag, parents washed and returned it. They do the, pretty much the same thing. But there's no clean process that we do every year where we go out and purchase through the budget any outfits, and undergarments, none of that. But they seem to be able to address those issues. When I did talk to each principal, they have been able to, as a child has gotten sick, or have been able to accommodate, to sustain them in school and, and keep them there, and, and parents would bring it back. And then many parents have volunteered and brought things in, clothes that they've outgrown. So they seem to have a supply that they're okay with. Now, Bailey, being, being the older kids, I guess that does happen maybe not as often. Are you saying it's happening more at Bailey now?
So there's just some conversation about it, that there's some soiling. It may be an accident. It may be children that may have a medical need they can't control, or get to the bathroom as fast. Or maybe have, maybe in the process of going to the bathroom, they may soil their clothes. It may be young girls getting menstruation. I don't know. I do know that there's talk around it. So that's why I was wondering what...
So now that I've, I've reached out to the principal, she's gonna meet with her PTA...
Okay, great.
Committee and see if they want to donate some various sizes that they can have at the beginning. And so we will, we did follow up on that.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments, concerns, anything? Where are we with the budget process, and what can we share with the public?
Okay, well, let me just start.
Well, we were gonna start our budget presentations next board meeting.
But we did meet today, and so the first part of the process was meeting with every administrator, remember? Because this is collaborative process. We want to hear, you know, I expect that they lead and know what their needs are in the building, and they have to bring those with rationale to this meeting, to tell us why. So the first piece you're gonna see is their wish lists, and it is a wish list. And so you're gonna hear everything from staffing to, more staffing than anything, to materials and to extra contractual things. We compile all of that in one document. So we are, we're planning to come to you with just that, because we wanna give you the full transparency of this is what the leaders are saying they need. Understanding we're gonna have to prioritize and pare it down. So we're hoping to have a series of budget presentations starting next week on, and with your permission, as you build the agenda and presentations. We would like to be on the agenda every meeting, or once, every meeting, to kinda keep you abreast of where we are. As you give us feedback in this process, we can come back with where we are with that. So the first one is next week.
And that's really just parameters and variables that we know at that time? Because they're still releasing information, and not everything is known yet.
We don't have all that from the state as well. So it is early. I mean, I know it appears, but a lot of my superintendent friends in our meetings, they are getting this process out now and planning their first meetings. I don't know, maybe per differently around this time of year as well, because we don't have a lot of information from the state. So we're gathering all that we can with all the leaders, and we will share that with you, some of the things, and then the priority list.
Okay, sounds good. Next is sports uniforms. So it seems to be an issue every year. We use BSN, I found, since sending this. Apparently, there are other districts with great uniform experiences that use the same vendor. Do all teams use the same vendor?
Yeah, I think Mr. Adam...
We, we've transitioned to BSN. So that's, that's, I think, why you're probably just, because we've, we've been transitioning to it, because we can have a different one.
Okay.
And your record is used across many...
Yeah. 'Cause I was gonna like make some suggestions, and then another trustee said, "Don't we have to go through the RFP process, or is it a bid net process? What happens with that?"
It's a, a lot of times, there, there is a bid that is already done that schools can all piggyback off of, like through Ed Data, BidNet dot com.
Okay. And so with BSN, right, BSN company, so every team will be having uniforms through BSN? No?
Not necessarily. I don't think we can guarantee that. It's, we're transitioning, so...
So what does that mean?
So that means, it's, I think it all depends. I would have to have a conversation. It's not, I mean, just in terms of my experience, it just, it also depends on the quality, it depends on the, the sport, et cetera. But most districts have, do use BSN, but I've had it in the past where they use others, so...
Okay. So, I mean, just...
The goal is quality and then good turnaround.
Okay. So, so for me, you know, my concern, I don't know what anyone else has a concern, is that every year, this tends to be an issue. With certain teams, it seems more than others, whether it's uniforms, equipment. I know the football team had an issue, modified football team a year or two ago. Girls' football, we all got an email from a parent, girls', not football, girls' basketball, basketball. This year, there was a boy basket, and last year, both years, there's a boy basketball player that had an issue. So I'm wondering how do we, if, how do, how is the district gonna work on making sure everyone has uniforms? I know you're new to this issue. But that's my goal, is just making sure the kids are in uniforms, and, you know, the children aren't embarrassed, and the districts is not embarrassed. How do we kinda unify that? Huh? Did you wanna say?
Do you wanna, do you want a big pool of, of, of uniforms sitting, sitting around, ordering more than you need?
So there was a year that a bunch of, was it uniforms or something, got stolen, due, out of the, do you remember that? I first got on the board with that.
This was a while ago.
Right. It was a while ago. No, it was a while ago. I had just got on the board, I think, when that happened, right before I got on the board. So we gotta be careful that that doesn't happen too, but I'm just wondering how to reduce, so we're not in the same place next year with the same stuff.
I thought I did send home in the packet.
Did you?
Yeah. A comprehensive plan of what we're doing about uniforms that we're putting in place.
I will check.
In terms of, first of all, uh, doing better at collecting uh, before the end of the year. And so when we met with Ms. McCord, because we lose a lot in that transition and a lot of the students, I lose them and, and so, you know, I'm making sure we start earlier to collect for June and uh, and you know, and holding students accountable for returning them or parents in terms of, they may have to be in versus school, but we, we, we need to get back what we give out. Uh, so we put that in there.
And trying to order one extra uniform of every size.
And he hasn't, that's a good point, because you did mention extras. They are expensive. Uh, to have ten extras of every size hanging around, he's not done that. So we did talk about one or two extras, you know, and it's, the company he's using currently, some of the sizes don't go up.
BSN or another company, I'm sorry?
The other company, the other company, which takes a long turnaround time. That, and the quality is, you've seen it, it's, they're adorable, they are very nice. Uh, but the turnaround time, that's the backwater line which you keep seeing. Uh, so we are, that meeting, I think I put in the update, we are moving from that, so we have quicker turnaround. Um, and that company has more sizes. The other company only went up to a certain size, which got into the way of that example you mentioned. As well as the, the coach ordered the highest size he could. So um, there's an inadvertent thing that happened, you know? So we, we are very aware of that and we are, we are gonna ensure that does not happen again. So we're transitioning there. Can you remember the things I put in my update I'm having in front of me?
I think you said it, it's, the inventory was number one. And we try to make sure that, you know, that the, the record system that we are aware of, if they do have a record system of, you know, jerseys versus, you know, they have that record system, but doing it in a way where it gets earlier so it doesn't seem as rushed. And then holding students accountable for, um.
So let's talk about that. Right, so let's talk about that, because that didn't happen. I know you weren't here yet, Dr. Jokel, but we were told last year that that was gonna happen, if you guys recall. I know as a mom, I went searching, flying through my kid's room to make sure, because I wanted to graduate, that they wouldn't graduate. Um, yet this year, we were on an email that, like it was girl basketball. Um, so I don't know how that happened, I don't know how they graduated. When I was nervous, my kid wouldn't graduate, right? Um, or even played other sports beyond fall, no, the, the winter season. So, listen, I'm probably in the minority, but I would be fine with a senior having a uniform um, or having one and then at least, because that's a whole year ahead of the season or nine months, whatever, that you know that you have to replace that uniform. So even if it's not returned in February, by November, that's like a long time to not get another uniform. But I'm, I'm probably in the minority, I know other people want the uniforms back. I'm fine with seniors taking them, but that's just me. Um, my senior didn't take hers, but.
Sorry, I just feel the need, because this is being televised.
Yes.
Ms. Mares is not condoning that kids keep their uniforms unless given explicit permission.
Yes, or unless it's framed, or something, I'm just saying individually, I would, I don't such, but my point is, even if a kid take, here's my point, even if a kid takes a uniform in Feb, end of basketball season, because we're gonna use that example, because that's the email we got, end of basketball season, don't return a uniform, but I still get to go across the stage, I don't know how. Or say the kid just disappears in February, we have, from February to, when, at what point does someone, anyone coached athletics, someone say that there needs to be another medium-sized uniform?
I think that process, from what, from our conversation, that process is in place. They are, they are doing it for this, but there was, seems to be a situation where there was an expectation of a specific size, that it wasn't actually, so it wasn't that it was um, purposeful. They followed a process. So I think, just from my understanding, they followed a process and now we've.
Do you mean that one kid or the whole girls?
No, for the whole, for the whole team, from my understanding, in terms of inventory, they have a, we were told, you know, we were communicating around the checklist that's used to check for it. It's washed, you know, all that, like there is, there is a process. I think just going back and I think refreshers and I think the, you know, the director alongside with myself, you know, just looking with Dr. Iverson and Ms. Raymond, just, just revisiting it once again.
And I think we included very clear, uh, increased expectations of the coaches for the various sport that they coach and, because they're the ones who normally distribute the uniforms and they collect it. And so uh, this process of you hand me your uniform, I check your name off, you just don't throw your uniform all in this basket and then I check it later, which is probably something that's been done in the past. So we're cleaning that up, that you must be cleared at the time you get it, sign it, and then when it comes back. So we're tightening up some of those structures to, to show that uh, the coaches take on more and you saw some language in there and I won't say it because it's a public meeting here, but you know, we, I did tell you some information on how we're holding them accountable.
Um, also, I know some districts take the, at the last game, say, go ahead and change in the locker room and take the uniform then at that last game.
Like when basketball ends, we, there's no reason why we can't collect those uniforms right in and there, we don't have to wait till June.
That's what I'm saying.
That's right, so we're, we're gonna change that timeline so that's. Because if there is some time that student didn't return and we know it earlier, we have time to give them time to look for it or pay for it.
And there's also some.
Quiet to us, or, and then it helps with the inventory on what we need to order next time. That order is going in earlier, we, we're gonna order earlier because we're gonna have our inventory back earlier. So cleaning up those systems and structures, we, that's what we're trying to do.
And there's also some morale building, even processes and procedures that can be infused into all of the, so it would be um, department-wide expectations. For example, um, when you're at an away game, everyone ride the bus home together. If teams are truly building and they're watching film and they're talking about how we played and performed on the way home with their coaches and debriefing, that's where you have that ride home and give me the uniform and change and then all parents pick up at Woodlands instead of, and I, trust me, I've been at nine o'clock at night games exhausted and can't wait to get home. But there's some schools that do very well in their athletics that have this actual process. It's actually team building, morale building, commitment to team, when you do those sort of things. But I'll go off on a tangent on athletics all day, because I have kids that are athletes, so. So um, don't let me do that, let's move on. But, but you're gonna be on the process this year.
Yes, we're going to.
We've switched to BSN.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
For now.
For now.
For now, yes.
We will be probably looking at that, so. Okay, more inquiries came in. Chromebooks, string bags, I'm a RJ Bailey parent that got this email this morning. So um, RJ Bailey students, correct me if I'm wrong, will be not taking home their Chromebooks, but they're gonna be using the same Chromebook in the morning, I'm gonna get my Chromebook and I'm gonna have this Chromebook until the end of the day, right? Reduces.
Just to you.
Just to me.
Your own Chromebook.
Every, you have your own Chromebook, you have your, everybody keeps their Chromebook. We got an email today that said they're gonna be getting string bags, which I did not understand what that was. I found out that's a draw string bag. Why are we doing that?
So, it's, I'm sorry, Dr. Iverson, it's a, it's a nylon bag.
Great.
And um, that's so Ms. Rossi felt that they could put this, in this bag and then that way they could carry it this way if they had a lot of books and some of them have big water jugs and they were having a hard time getting um, around. And she felt this would be to the best.
Another point, may I ask you that before you?
I didn't see the phrase.
Can I ask you that before you ask your question, trustee? And so, you know, uh, Bailey is departmentalized, we all know that. So they move, just like it's, um, uh, like um, like a middle school, they move from class to class. And so they, they're like this, books in here. So you know, there was a concern we had last year, we, we remember board members who were here, you know, the, the Chromebooks are heavy and they're, they're big, if you've seen them. So imagine I have my books and now I have a Chromebook on top of it and I'm moving from art to using so-called pictures. It's now with me, it's not gonna, um, it's not staying, I'm not picking up a new one everywhere I go. I'm gonna have my own. This was an op, this was a way, as you can see, it's very reasonable, is we pay sixty dollars for every one hundred. So for like four hundred kids or so, whatever, Bailey, I mean, it's, to me, minimum about two forty, two hundred and forty dollars to get four hundred. They're not expected to last for the duration of life, they're, they're, they're out material, I forget what it is. But it will, it will get us through the year. It's to me like, uh, in consumable that we purchase every year for instruction. Kids have their own consumables with like literacy and math that they write in, that's their book. We have to replace that every year when they, as we teach those, uh, enough of math and literacy. So it's sort of an instructional uh, tool, because the Chromebook is what they use. This is how they can transport it safely throughout the building, is, it will fit on their back while they also have books here, because I've been in Bailey and many of the kids come with uh, jugs, these water bottles that parents have sent in them with. And so they have a water bottle here, they have books here. So all of that was a, the thought process, how do we help them? Second, before, we were trying to respond to the concerns we heard around uh, parents have signed an IUP that's required for the responsibility of the Chromebook if it breaks. We clearly heard and understood that it was probably unreasonable to expect a parent to want to be responsible for a Chromebook their child didn't have signed to them. And the way to model was already, they used a different one every time, so the, the, there's potential for germs, potential for whatever, was all there, we heard it clearly. So from that, the survey went out to kinda get some data, uh, you know, like we always like to do to form our decisions. Uh, and we, so we followed that process and I will give you the data. Not everyone responded, but out of maybe a hundred eleven, hundred nineteen parents, about seventy percent clearly articulated they prefer to carry, to have their child have their own Chromebook. So that's the decision, so.
I was hoping you said it home, I filled that out too, I was hoping. Maybe you could bring it home.
That wasn't on the survey.
No, I know, I said I was just hoping. Okay, so do we have two trustees with questions, I see two, so trustee Valen, Jacobson?
So, thank you. As a most protective lady you may know, I've been one of, at least a few who've been extremely concerned about the accountability for the technology we're asking our students to use and asking our parents to be responsible for. Thank you for moving in that direction. Um, just, just, and this is wading into the details, I know, but I'm a curious person. So I'm just wondering, why can't they carry their own backpacks? They probably have padded shoulders and are more comfortable, because we were, and I'm asking because I thought we were told that nowadays, departmentalized or whatever, that the books are left in the classrooms and they shouldn't have all those books in their backpack. Maybe they have a book that they're reading on the bus, please God. Maybe those ridiculous Stanley water bottles, instead of a nice lightweight plastic one. But I can't imagine what else might be in that backpack that's, that's weighing it down. So I'm just curious, the uncomfortable string bag versus the nice padded shoulders.
She said they were carrying a lot of books.
And she said, I did hear that, and she did, she said they had a lot of books.
And water bottles, and she said that every kid has an oversized water bottle and.
So again, so just thinking, again, from the academic point of view, we were told the books are staying in the classrooms, the workbooks the kids have theoretically may be at home and they only have the pages they're doing for homework, uh, getting turned in, so.
I don't know why they're carrying them.
Just curious, it's a point of curiosity, I'm wading in too much into the details, but it, back when my kids were there, my son did a study in his Bailey days on, in a survey on the weight of the backpack and I was, so I get it. Trustee Jameson.
It's kind of a piggyback, and as a parent of a Bailey student, I am and a member of the tech committee, super happy that this was the outcome of the survey. Um, and Danya's waving her hand too.
Oh, that's why she has.
Yeah, she did the question.
Yeah.
Um, so my question is, is basically the same as trustee Valen's about their regular backpacks, because at least from, from my child's account, her class is particularly large, so there's not even enough lockers in the room. So like the kids are already kind of having lockers in one spot and another spot. And so then they have, and, and she's in sixth grade, so we've gone through this thing before and I'm sure trustee Long has had some experience with her some, where these bags don't last very long at, at all. Like not just through the end of the year, but like maybe not through the end of February. And so I, I'm thinking also from a cost perspective, they have backpacks that they work well. Right now, my daughter's carrying everything with her anyway. Like just the backpack and her coat is staying in the locker and everything else she's carrying. And I know, you know, I've, I've talked to principal Rossi about this too, like there was concerns about like, you know, they're, they're growing, they're prepubescent, they don't know their bodies very well, you know? So they're dropping stuff, they're crashing into stuff, like, and there was concerns around pencil cases falling and all, and the water bottles falling and all these different things. And so my daughter is one that carries multiple reading books because she loves books and so she's, she is carrying a whole lot. And so I, I'm confused why like we're, we're just changing the weight from like their backs to their fronts and then creating situations where more things can fall out. And so I'm trying to understand why, why are we paying for a thing that we know won't last when they have more substantial things already in their possession that are, like the, that are being utilized to their full potential? And I, and I think from the perspective of the workbooks, from my experience, different teachers do different things. Some teachers do have the workbooks in the classroom and the kids only use whatever they have. Other teachers want them to carry them around with them all day and because they're departmentalized, you know, they're bringing like their social studies book down to Mandarin, over to whatever, and so it, it adds.
Could be, leave it at home and bring page ten to fifteen this week.
Yeah, like, it, they're, I can almost guarantee a lot of people forget all that stuff. But I think, I feel like we're building solutions when we already have them existing. And that's why I'm trying to understand why we're making more, more stuff for them to manage.
It, uh, well, the second bag only had the Chromebook. Here's the, the issue was the heaviness of the backpack.
It won't just have the Chromebook.
Everything she's carrying.
Like every, it's just gonna get all kinds of stuff shoved in it. Oh, those are gonna be all kinds of weird stuff in the backpack.
And, and yes, uh, here's the issue, remember? The issue was the heaviness with that Chromebook added to everything else.
But they had it already, like they're already having it in front of them rather than on their back, which would be more secure.
If you have their backpack that they're just carrying in their arms, what's, it seems just.
And you're right, the Chromebook is heavy in addition.
If it's added to the backpack where now everything is, because they don't carry their backpacks now, they're just saying everything they're carrying in a backpack with the Chromebook. There was issues last year, if you remember, around the backpacks being just so heavy on their backs. So this was just a, a way we were thinking, uh, if the Chromebook is isolated in just this little thing on it and they have whatever they need, it, we won't have the issue of parents feeling that it was just too heavy for them to carry all day long, not just.
Oh yeah, I was just telling you, they're gonna put heavy stuff in there and it's gonna be heavy in the front end.
And we don't want the water bottles in there with the Chromebook because of the. Okay, so trustee Mads, I'm so sorry, are you waving?
No, I have a question. I have a few questions. As far as the Chromebooks, the district owns those, right? We do not lease those at all whatsoever? We bought those. Those are our assets?
Yes, yes.
So, the Chromebook being heavy is not only an issue at Bailey, as we know, it's pretty much across the district at all the schools. So I did some research and I remember I asked, why are we using Chromebooks and maybe not a tablet? The answer was because Chromebooks are compatible with Google Classroom. Well, there are other devices, uh, much, much, much lighter than the Chromebook, um, that we could utilize also. So I don't know if this is a tech committee research project, but I think it might be advantageous to kinda look at that option and come back with a suggestion. Uh, because we don't only have to use those big, crunchy Chromebooks, there are other devices we can use that are much lighter as well.
Thank you, trustee. Did you have another question?
No, that was it. And I think once we find out the numbers, maybe we can sell these Chromebooks, do a buyback program or something. But I think there's options to kinda get around the heaviness of the Chromebook.
Trustee Valen.
If we explore them.
Let me just say one, or ask, I believe, I could be wrong, I'm not an expert. I'm not gonna ask anyone to give me the answer now, I'll just state it for maybe discussion on Thursday at our tech committee meeting. But I believe the Chromebooks, when grades three enough do state testing and I believe the Chromebooks are more conducive to the administration and taking of those tests, because we're moving to all computer-based testing than, more so than iPads, for example. So I just feel the need to state that and if we could follow up on that on Thursday to confirm.
Okay.
And the meeting's from twelve thirty, uh, ten thirty to twelve thirty on Thursday.
All right, so that was the, you know, then, um, I will say one last thing, I'm just gonna say, because I have a not-so-book-reading student that's gonna walk nicely in the hallway with their books, I have a, I will run when I can, if nobody's here, down this little awesome hallway that looks like a, 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 a track thing, and, and it's gonna, and so my only concern with a drawstring paper bag is a swing, I could see him swinging, because he's bored, and it's fun to swing string bags. So that's my only concern, his bookbag is like, big and secured and padded, it actually has a, a laptop sleeve in it, it's awesome. He doesn't get, I hope he doesn't swing that thing, but I can see the swinging of a string bag, he would love that. So I will talk to him about not swinging the Chromebook, 'cause mommy's responsible for it. Um, he was a kindergartner pre-COVID and never broke his Chromebook, he took it back and forth to school, it was not too heavy, but I guess other kids find it too heavy, um, but, uh, so I'm, I am, as a parent, I was like, string bags, but let's see how it works.
And let me just speak to that, that can be viewed very clearly, you know, they are intermediate age, they're fourth, fifth, and sixth grade kids, they're about to go to middle school, so part of this is going to be, there's some expectations that they will, Ms. Rossi will be going, and your parents will get something around what that expectation, this is where we start teaching them the responsibility of, you don't swing that Chromebook. And, and you are, we have to see it on your, so it's not gonna just be, here's your bag, figure it out, they're gonna spend time train, you know, training, showing, and go on over what's expected about how you use this Chromebook and carry it. And it's gonna be expected that every kid does it. There you go, period.
And their parents are responsible otherwise.
They'll swing.
In a very kind way, but this is where they learn it, we have this, we can't always suggest to what we know they're going to do, this is what we expect, and you do this.
Do not swing back.
Or the Chromebook itself.
And there's gonna be enough supervision to prevent, hopefully, too much boredom. Okay, any more public questions? No? Okay, we're gonna move on in the agenda.
Okay.
Gotta move back to the agenda, I'm sorry.
Public comments.
Thank you, are there any public comments?
I don't know.
No, okay. Next in our meeting is anticipated adjournment to executive session, the time is now seven forty-three, can I get a motion?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters, and their employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice and counsel.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second in the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries, we're now in executive session, seven forty-four PM, thank you.
Oh my God, these chairs are so cool.
Everything's cold, everything's cold.
No, just everything's cold.
You're good.
Okay, we're back in public session, it's ten thirty-eight PM, and we're going right to approvals.
Four.
Thank you. Excuse me, instructional personnel items E one, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second in the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, E two, personnel non-instructional items.
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second in the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, item E three, board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, item E four, pupil personnel services items.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, we're gonna move to J one, review agenda items for next meeting. First is J one minute, J two, policy approvals, J three, health services rate, J four, treasurer's report, J five, warrant report, J six, SEL contract. Hearing none, we'll move on to the closing items, K one, any new business? Hearing none.
Remember to vote.
Remember to vote.
On January fourteenth.
When, January fourteenth, what time?
From seven AM till nine PM.
Where do I get that one? Is that next Tuesday?
Yes, it is.
Wonderful.
Take a break before we need to go.
That's what I'll do, thank you so much, trustee Mares, is that what you were gonna say too?
No, mine was just that, as a reminder that, 'cause we talked a lot about tech stuff, tech committee at ten thirty.
Tomorrow.
On Thursday, not tomorrow.
Thursday.
Thursday.
It's almost Friday, God bless the night, okay. Any, no, more new business, hearing none, can I get adjournment, please?
I move, during this meeting.
Okay.
It's improperly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, good night, ten forty-one.
I don't know.
We're starting at six thirty, four hours.
Getting better, is that for me?